It's uh, you know.
Um.
She doesn't throw it to me. Right, that's the view. How are you? It's just this little one. I was on the last slide, not the first. Um. Today?
I think we're good. Okay. We'll call the meeting to order, please. Okay, item number two, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll get a motion to approve the minutes from December twentieth, twenty eighteen, planning commission minutes. You guys are. I read through all of them. How are you guys all doing?
I'll second that.
Sorry. Any further amendments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. We'll move on to new business, item number four.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Tonight, the first item on our agenda is a concept review. So where we are in the process, we are at step one. So we're just starting to learn a little bit about a project, learning about location, diving into some of the details that we know, and beginning discussion about things that we don't. So, the concept plan we're reviewing tonight will go to council March fourth. Preliminary plat, rezoning, final plat are likely to come this spring. So, as you can see, we have a lot of steps to come in the future, but we are starting tonight. So here's a little bit about site detail. This was an early concept plan that we saw about the United Properties piece. So I'm gonna come back in one slide, but for a little bit of context, it's the southwest corner of Highway two twelve, Jonathan Carver Parkway. Directly west is the D.R. Horton Meridian Fields project that we recently worked on together, and south is Carver Elementary. East is the Spring Creek Neighborhood. So again, corner of Highway two twelve and Jonathan Carver Parkway. An early concept plan that we saw was this with just the colored bubbles. It shows that there are several commercial sites on the property. Tonight, we are discussing the yellow. So along Monroe Drive, it's labeled as a gas and convenience user. The site changes a little bit in a couple more slides, so this was a pretty early concept, and we've learned a little bit more about the site. So what is the city role and responsibility in this process? We provide guidance to the development team, we review the submitted plans, ensure compliance with city code, standard detail plates, we provide notice and information to residents and community members, review at planning commission and city council level, draft and execute the developer's agreement, and monitor, inspect site for compliance with approved plans. And here's some information that we know about the United Properties piece. So, the knowns are that the property is likely to develop with commercial users. So this property has been guided since the two thousand eight comprehensive plan as commercial. It stayed commercial in the design Carver planning process, and United Properties has come forward with commercial users. So no comprehensive plan amendment is required. Rezoning will be required due to recent annexation. It was actually approved yesterday by the state. So once a property is annexed, you'll recall, the default zoning is agriculture, so we'll need to think a little bit about the zoning through the process, but it is typical for annexation to come in as agriculture. We're anticipating that the zoning will be freeway commercial with a planned commercial development overlay or a PCD. So freeway commercial with a PCD overlay. As you'll recall, this allows for flexibility for optimal site design. It's similar to the PRD, the Planned Residential Development, so thinking about this with the commercial lens on it. And then we know the permitted uses which are in our city code. So those are retail sales, personal services and businesses, and essential services. A recent project to think about in conjunction with this one would be Carver Square. So thinking about Carver Dental, Children of Tomorrow, and the new chiropractic clinic that also developed under a PCD. So this will be following the same typical process. Things at this point that we do not know about this project, the businesses and services on site. So if you think about the permitted uses within a district, we can give the general guidelines, but the city does not say who the end user of the site is if it falls within that commercial guideline. So we can determine the type of user, but not the specific. So we can't say we prefer user X over user Y. We can just say, we're looking for these types of development. We also are not sure about the timing of the full buildout of the site. So we'll continue to work with United Properties as I identify users for the site to ensure compliance with the city code. There's also additional unknowns as we start the concept plan process, so the plans are pretty bare at this time. So thinking about preliminary plat and final plat, that's typically when we start to drill into the detailed engineering plans. So a concept plan is typically just where something might sit on a site, a general first look, an opportunity for us to give feedback to the developer, provide information that we know about the site, things that might be important to us. So you'll see on the screen, this is the concept plan that was submitted. It's for the gas and convenience user that will abut directly on Monroe Drive. We start to get a feel of what the turn lanes might be into the project. Something that I think is going to be important to think about with this one is traffic. So what we learned from Meridian Fields, what we know about Jonathan Carver Parkway, what we know about the Spring Creek Neighborhood, and some of those headaches that happen. So we have, the traffic study has been submitted by United Properties in conjunction with Westwood. So the traffic study is in for review. We haven't done a deep dive into it. Our city engineer is reviewing it right now, but it has been indicated that a temporary signal will be required with the gas convenience user to go in. So Meridian Fields wasn't the one that pulled the trigger, but the gas convenience user will be. So temporary light will go in, and then a more permanent structure when Jonathan Carver Parkway is expanded to its full project lane in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. So on the screen now are some concept elevations, an idea of what the building might look like. Westwood did a great job providing a narrative that was also included in the packet that gave you a little bit of detail about how things might develop, what they might look like. So that is the information we have now at concept plan. I'll open it up for discussion. Bruce Carlson is here with Westwood. He's the project engineer. If you have some specific feedback for him or questions.
Ninety, ninety-seven hundred square feet seems like a fairly large building for this.
So as you'll note, there's a gas station that's connected to the building, so that's something to consider.
Well, there's a gas station, which is just pumps. Right?
You mean, or a convenience store and gas station?
Wasn't the building just ninety-seven hundred square feet?
Bruce is the building ninety-seven.
Oh.
Did I not say car wash? Did I say gas pumps? It's a car wash. So you'll see here in the picture on the screen where my cursor is, that's the door for the car wash.
Gotcha.
And again, up here.
Do we require recycling the water?
So for this site, this one's a little bit interesting with the stormwater ponds. So the city needs stormwater ponds for Monroe Drive. The county needs stormwater ponds for Jonathan Carver Parkway, and then the site will also need it. So we're all working together on the site, which is, I think, a creative way to approach it, that we're mixing in some places both public water from the city as well as the county. So water is required to stay on site. Oh, you mean the car wash?
Right.
I mean the car wash, like we did with Fleet Farm.
I don't know if we know those details quite yet. But I can tell you about the stormwater, obviously.
So are we recycling the stormwater?
To wash our vehicles. Pulling from the ponds.
A unique idea. Are there other ideas besides this idea when we said United Properties concept plan? It sounded like there was kind of open yet for other ideas.
Sure. So the project you'll see right now is called Carver Creek Commons. So we're thinking through that name a little bit at staff level with the development team, knowing that we have several both Carvers and several creeks. So the property as a whole will be branded, and then the site is likely to develop as users are identified. So the gas convenience will be first with additional users to be identified on a parcel, on the whole parcel. So as we move through, it'll be branding as one name, but several smaller projects.
So what percentage of the parcel use is this concept plan about?
So in total, the site is thirty point six acres, and the gas convenience user is one point eight seven acres.
Oh, alright, okay. That's helpful.
So this is, this view of it is probably helpful too. So the areas of pink will be left to develop. The stormwater ponds have adjusted a little bit, but there is significant space that's left on the site.
Any other thoughts, anybody?
Madam Chair, and I would just say I'm excited to see this develop, and the one thing as I was reading through, I was concerned just about traffic in and out. But really seeing it on the plans here, I think the way it's laid out, and then of course with the traffic study that will continue to develop as we go along, but that was one thing that I was having having an eye on, and so I think so far, so good. There isn't anything that I have seen in this concept that personally causes me heartburner to raise a red flag at this stage, so.
Would you like to make a statement?
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Hello. My name's Reed Welch. I just had a question on, with the convenience gas store, is there any different pollution requirements? It is across from a school. I was just wondering if there's a, you know, either state level or city level requirements.
Sure. So that's typically vetted out through the permitting process with like the Carver County Watershed Group, the city, and then there's also state requirements for gas.
Okay.
I think overall, it's very nice to see this property starting to become developed. People have waited a long time. Of course, we know that probably not everyone's gonna like what's gonna go in there, but everyone's waiting for commercial retail to come, so it's great.
Can you let us know who you are?
Reed Welch. I did have one question about possible signage. It is across the street from residential neighborhoods. Does the city have any, you know, I know the Fleet Farm was kind of away from other houses for their giant silo sign. I'm just wondering if there's any thought of where the, you know, convenience store obviously be open many hours of the day, and presumably they'll have their sign on.
So as we start getting more plans with preliminary plat, the signage is usually identified, and then the city has a permitting process too. So the city code calls for the size that a sign can be. So when that's submitted, it'll go through the city process as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think as we go through the process, there will be ample opportunity for feedback from the public.
We're not gonna have another silo, though.
I don't have any other comments besides I think just letting everybody know upfront that a temporary signal is needed and planned on is gonna just alleviate a lot of concern.
Sure.
Voice from the public, so I think that's helpful to know.
Do you wanna come up?
Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be back. I'll just say a couple things. I wanted to correct the record that I'm not an engineer.
Oh, sorry. Most people would run with that and say.
No, 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 I'm not gonna run with that. I work with engineers. I'm senior project manager for Westwood Professional Services. We are the civil engineer company selected for this project. Westwood was also the civil engineer for Meridian Fields. So Westwood has a commercial division and a residential division as well. And then full disclosure, back in a prior life, between nineteen ninety-nine and twenty-ten, I was vice president of retail development for United Properties. So left United Properties back in the Great Recession. So I started working on this in two thousand and six, back when I was with United Properties. So it's been a long time coming, and and still, so I'm happy to work on it again, that life can come around and I can be part of this. And we worked really hard over the summer on Monroe Drive with D.R. Horton to get Monroe Drive kicked off and going, which I think that has been the impetus of finally some commercial users taking a look at this particular site. The one thing I wanted to clarify is that United Properties will be developing for the most part, and particularly for this gas and convenience, is we will be the developer, but they will buy the land, and they will come through a process themselves for permitting, for all the details that I think some of the questions that came up here. So what we're trying to do is be able to tell this user, hey, it works for your type of operation. We've kind of teed it up and and from the traffic study and the sizing and from the stormwater, and then how it would fit, what we're trying to do is make this fit for future development. Back maybe ten years ago, you used to come in with bigger users and the smaller users would come after. It's really at different times now, and I don't know that there'll ever be big box users here, so it might end up being a series of, you know, more village-like in its final look, but we feel that this works well in that position. We feel that's gonna be a use that will be a benefit to the area as well. So in this case, we're excited about it, but we're just asking for the concept, and then that user, when they purchase a property, then they'll come through with all the particular details. And so right now, it's just under a purchase agreement contingent upon us working out all the pad deliverables.
Just a couple other comments. So again, thank you for bringing a project forward to us to look at here tonight. As things move forward and continue through the process, a couple other things, maybe just to note and kind of follow, you know that you've worked on these types of projects before, but looking at the pond and where it is situated to the gas station and convenience store, and then on the other side of that, the home, the residence, water carries sound, so just maybe be sensitive to some of the noise, the lighting, you know, when you're announcing the pumps and stuff. Now, that would, I guess that would be the only thing, as you continue to work through those processes, to be sensitive to that, as that residential area develops out. I think on the other side of Monroe, you've got the contour of the land that's going to kind of help buffer some of that sound, and of course, the highway, but just seeing where those, a few of those residential lots are in relation to that site, that might be something to just kind of keep in the back of your head as you work through the process.
So I took notes on the comment from the resident that was here today about signage or along Jonathan Carver. So I wrote that down, so we'll keep that in mind. I think buffering was already addressed. We'll continue to address it as well, but I think you addressed that for the D.R. Horton Meridian Fields development, because that was one of our concerns as well, because we will need the support from residents of Carver in order to be successful, and they want them to come live, work, and play here, you know, at our development as well.
Agreed.
Absolutely. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add two more comments. We provided mailing to the preliminary plat and rezoning area, so within three hundred and fifty feet, just as a heads up that we were gonna start reviewing this concept plan. So neighbors that will be receiving some of that information have already gotten a first look at some of this information. And then there's a page on our website that is set up, so if anyone is watching at home and wants to keep tabs on where this project is in the process, visit the city's website. I'll try my best to keep it updated.
So the neighbors received notice of this meeting as well?
Correct, yes.
So there isn't a standing uproar from the neighbors?
I haven't received any comment from that mailing.
And as we go through the process, obviously.
Correct.
Hopefully they can keep up and participate in any kind of public hearings that we have moving forward and give more feedback, because that's worked well in the past so far.
One thing I could add too is that when we did the traffic study, the traffic study is specific to this gas and convenience user, specific to that site plan with those two access points as well. So it speaks to stacking and flow through there, so it's not a general traffic study. So it was commissioned specifically for that particular use.
Madam Chair, just a quick clarification question.
Sure.
Erin, question for you. Did we also, it's kind of hard with the ground being frozen, but did we do post signs at the site itself?
Generally, once the property has been purchased by the end user, they'll put up a sign. So I'm not anticipating anything for a while, but there will be a sign eventually.
Okay, but nothing related to the three hundred and fifty feet notice?
Right, that's something we've talked about a little bit at a staff level, just tossing around if we should. Some communities do it where they say, development coming, visit the city's website. So it's something that we've talked about, but not something we've done in practice to date.
Thank you.
Has the school district had any input?
We provided notice. We have a really close relationship just keeping up with development. They're often interested in the number of rooftops that we see, but yes, they do know about this development and how it's proposed as a commercial user.
I just have one question, which we can address now or later. From an access standpoint, is it gonna access the space from the west and the south?
Do you mean on Jonathan Carver Parkway?
Yeah, I mean from getting access into the convenience.
Sure.
Yeah.
So.
From Monroe Drive, and then also.
There's a quick right in here, so right only, and then a full intersection here.
Okay. Just looking at the flow.
So we're working on that with the county right now. It is anticipated, but since the street won't have access to the northern portion of the site, it's not likely to give access to the gas convenience user day one.
We would like to, and I think the county intends to have a write-in on Jonathan Carver Parkway, midpoint between two twelve and Monroe Drive, and that was put in because of a prior traffic study that D.R. Horton did, and it would alleviate traffic at the intersection, so it would just get the cars in right away, and it would take pressure off in the future the intersection of Spring Creek, Monroe Drive, and Jonathan Carver. The right-in on Monroe Street is over two hundred and thirty feet away from the intersection, so it's hard to tell the scale on there, but on the screen.
But otherwise, you would come in then from the north side or the backside then of the convenience store? Traveling south down Jonathan Carver Parkway?
The convenience store will face east, so.
Okay.
Yep, so you'll come in, you will come in, even if you took some in the future, a right in, if you're heading southbound on Jonathan Carver Parkway, you'd still come in, you know, to the front of the gas and convenience, and if you take that right in off of Monroe Drive, you're coming into the front. You're hitting the pumps first.
Okay.
I think the operator prefers that, just to alleviate any, alleviates any conflicts or congestion by the front door.
Sure.
Keeps people at the pumps.
Especially with the car wash in play, too.
Yep, and it keeps them away.
Keep the flow that way. Okay.
That north entrance would be only a right turn in. You couldn't make a left, right?
No, there's no, yeah, it has a median, and there'd be no left out from there as well. We would like a left out, actually, but I don't think that we're gonna get it with stacking on Jonathan Carver, the transition to the left turn lane if you're going southbound, if you want to turn left on Monroe.
Those are all the fun details, so, okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, feedback, things to consider?
Not anything more than we've already kind of discussed. I think just going through, you know, each stage that we go through always brings about.
Having been part of the discussion for Fleet Farm, where we put a lot of pressure on them to recycle the.
The water.
I would think it would only be reasonable we do that again.
I wrote that down, and again, they're gonna come through themselves, but I'll tell them tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think it was like sixty or eighty percent was recycled.
We can dig into that a little bit too, different specifics.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, you were just allowing him a big.
What's that?
I was talking to Glenn.
Okay, we can move on to your next presentation. Erin?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission. Next is an ordinance discussion, so I'm not asking you to give any formal recommendation, no public hearing, just getting you a little bit familiar with a topic that we're likely to see at an upcoming meeting for a public hearing. So on the screen, there are a couple photos with examples of what is considered small cell wireless equipment. So there's been a recent change in the Minnesota Legislature that allows small cell technology throughout cities right-of-way. So the area essentially from usually the back of a property line through a street, so thinking along Jonathan Carver Parkway, the grass area on either sides is the right-of-way. The new language restricts cities from the ability to prohibit this equipment from any district, so if a small cell wireless user came in and said, I wanna put my equipment on a residential pole, at this point, we wouldn't be able to say no. The new legislation does not allow cities to say, that doesn't fit with that area, no. So something that we've considered at a staff level and talked about quite a bit with the city attorney is a small cell wireless conditional use permit. So the city of Carver additionally has a right-of-way permitting process, so if someone wants to put utilities in a right-of-way, they need to come in with a plan. We permit it, we collect a fee. So this would continue, but there's another layer that would be added, the conditional use permit. So thinking about areas of our community that might be adversely impacted by this equipment would be residential districts and then the historic district. So I know the amount of work that the HPC and people downtown, their care for the downtown district, suddenly having some technology from twenty nineteen that is on our decorative poles throughout the downtown could probably change the landscape and the streetscape of downtown. So the discussion tonight is about adding language that small cell wireless technology is a conditional use in residential in the historic district. What this does is it allows the planning commission and city council to review the conditional use permit, also would have the required public hearing, so anyone within three hundred and fifty feet of the location would receive mailing, be invited to the planning commission's public hearing, and it would allow us to have some conditions for the permit. So thinking about what it looks like if the equipment needs to match the pole would be an example of a condition that we could put. This is a really interesting time to be. This is a really interesting time to be thinking about small cell. It's a moving target. A lot of cities are acting on it right now, but none of it has been formally tried by a small cell wireless company. So we could absolutely move forward with a conditional use permit. In two months, we could be back after something happening in a city where the language changes and we learn more about the process. So this is what we're moving forward with right now. We think it's a good step to essentially allow us to review the process a little bit more with the planning commission, city council, and residents. So what we would need to do is update the use chart in our zoning district to have small cell wireless technology as a conditional use. We'd additionally need to add a definition, so thinking about what that means for us. In the staff memo, there was the state statute definition. I suspect I would go pretty close to that, but maybe make it a little more user-friendly. Reading that definition, it was clunky, so if we can make it something that works a little bit better for a resident who's thinking, "What is this?" that if they get a notice, we can point them to the definition that hopefully makes a little more sense. So again, no formal action tonight, but just wanted to get you thinking about the small cell technology and the conditional use process.
So what you're saying is that if they wanna come in, they can use our poles?
Correct.
Do they have to pay at all?
So through the fee, the right-of-way fee, that's where we collect. But that is the big change in the legislature, is that they can also use city equipment.
I'm done.
Madam Chair, I've got a few comments. First of all, I think the 5G technology is great. It's exciting to see that come here for our residents and future businesses and current businesses. The biggest challenge I see with the small cell technology is the density requirements because it's, because they use a mesh network to communicate, the density of these poles is concerning to me. And then related would be the aesthetics. And the FCC, the recent FCC ruling, which the impact of that is still unknown, along with some legislative language that's happening right now during this session with the mobile carriers, would preempt local control in the aesthetics arena. And then also in terms of the shot clock for approving the applications and the, and the fees themselves. So a couple things I just wanna comment on as we consider and we weigh through this in our advisory role. The FCC ruling, again, still a lot of unknowns and a lot of discrepancies between the state law and what the federal impact, what the federal ruling is saying. And while there are a lot of differences, the ones that primarily raise the red flag for me are the definition of small cells. So the federal definition and that ruling is different than states, and specifically our state. The shot clock difference and then the fee caps. And then also our ability as cities to have the, our ability to stop an application or deem an application incomplete. So I think that has potential impacts even on, in other areas and setting precedent, like on our 60-day rule and things that work really well for us right now. So just some things to, that are concerning and are out of our control, but are some things to be thinking about with this legislation at the federal level and at the state level. Because I do know that the carriers, the main and the major carriers in the state are very active in seeking legislation that complements some of this federal ruling, the FCC ruling. The, what you're proposing here and looking at additional language in creating a definition and your recommendation to be consistent with state statute is something I like, I like seeing. I was pleased to see that. The reason being those carriers, those major carriers that are working and are familiar working in the state and working with cities through this process understand what our definition is if they're working here. And having a consistent definition that's consistent with what state definition is, I think, is a benefit to us. Couple other comments. Going back to the aesthetics, if you think, think about density and how the mesh network works in communicating, if you think about a square block, each carrier has tended to want to come in and have their own equipment, their own poles, not necessarily lease from the city or go, and they may want to do that, but because of the density, they may want to, if they're not the first one on the city's equipment, they might not wanna share that space with their competitors. And so when one comes in, they all come in, and because of the density, I worry about, if you look at a square block, how many poles could be in the right-of-way and what does that do for public safety? What does that do for clutter in our right-of-way? And then what does that do for the aesthetics of the area itself? And again, tying that back to the legislation, the FCC ruling, and our ability to really preempt our control, our local control, and having a say on those things is concerning to me. Let's see, a couple other things to think about. The wireless carriers are really active in the state legislation right now. Some of the things that they're looking at, well, let me back up. One of the things that, as they're starting to roll out the 5G technology in communities and that's, we're starting to see that happen, they're really focusing on going where there is density and going where there's either commercial or residential density. And one of the places that they've been looking at doing is outside of the right-of-way are parks. And so maybe something to think through is, what happens if a carrier comes in and wants to either utilize equipment or a pole that we have in our park? Are we gonna allow that? And what happens if they wanna come in and you allow one, you have to allow all, and now you've got how many different carrier poles in the parks? And then I'm not, I'm not certain what our position on in the city is about allowing private utilities in parks, but if you allow that, that's essentially a utility, does that create precedent for other private utilities in a public space?
Sure.
So a couple things just to think through as we move forward, and again, there's a lot of unknowns with this, a lot of unknowns with where that federal ruling's gonna land, and a lot of unknowns with the legislation. But I do know that there are a number of legislators that are looking and listening to both sides, listening to the cities. I know the cities are very active in this and in this specific area, and that there is a desire to want to have a non-legislative solution. When you get these applications in, some of the carriers are really concerned, expressing concerns about the application process and that it's too timel, it takes too long. And so perhaps when we're thinking through either making modifications to our application or making modi, not necessarily to the ordinance, but to the process itself, to be mindful of making sure we're clear on when does that timeline start? For the carriers, that timeline starts when their business plan says, "We're ready to go, we've reached out, we've talked to the city, and we contacted somebody and said we wanna do this." Their clock has started. And so some of the things that they're saying to the legislators are, "Well, it takes 270 days or 300 or 400 days to go through this." We're saying at the city level, "No, your application was not complete. You didn't have all the materials to us until this day. It's really only been 32 days," or whatever it might be. So where there's opportunities to make clarifications, so when these applications do come, that everybody's working off the same timelines and everybody's knowing what the process is, I think that would be helpful and something to consider going forward. In terms of cost, I think sticking with the state, what the state has as guidelines, I think is, it would be wise at this point. But also caution that there is a discrepancy between what the federal cap would be versus what the state is allowing. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, obviously, for me, I read through all of this. It was a, it's an unfamiliar topic. I liked the proactiveness of what we're trying to do, and I look at it as a protective thing for your community, which I'm all on board with. Now, knowing that it's a moving target, I mean, that we're gonna have to amend as we move through it probably with some kind of blueprint of what we're going for, it seems obviously the most realistic. There's a lot of variables involved. So as far as, you know, knowing the expert, that sounds ideal. So I appreciate all your input.
I do actually have one additional comment, Madam Chair and staff. Again, going back to the aesthetics piece, I know that the, and I had an opportunity to read through the FCC ruling, 'cause I'm nerdy that way. So one of the things in that ruling is they talked about publishing the aesthetic standards, and there's still not a lot of clarity around the timing of when that happens or what that means or whether a community could even be grandfathered in, but depending on how this thing lands. But my question for you would be, have we published any aesthetic standards and...
So no, in our, in our current city code, we don't have any aesthetic standards, and I know there was a January 2018...
Yep.
Kind of drop dead to be able to revise anything. So my hope is through the conditional use permit that we could work through some of that with conditions. I don't think we'll be able to completely change the way something looks, but we could at least say it needs to match the pole. So I'll agree, we were a little behind the eight ball on the aesthetics, but I think conditional use might be our saving grace for some of that.
I agree. I think that gives us some flexibility to make some decisions to help, help with that, so, great. Thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
I have a question on a side issue. Do we have regulations that control whether somebody can do something in the city streets?
What do you mean do?
So somebody's landscaping their property and they piles landscaping rock in the street. Do they need a permit to do that?
Yes.
Okay. As a company like this, if they're gonna be doing a major maintenance project and gonna be blocking up the street for a few hours, do they need a permit?
Yes, we typically, we have what's called an obstruction permit, so if a city street needs to close at all, they do need to apply for it. It's reviewed by public services. Typically, we go out with cones, just to give people a heads-up that work is going to be done.
Okay.
Another comment, Madam Chair. Erin, question for you, too. I think my understanding of the legislation that's out there as well and the ruling is that there's no differentiation between what we can require in and outside of the right-of-way. It's the same, and that's different than what we typically would see or have the ability to have some local control over. I'm not sure what the solution is for that or if we've thought through any of those things, but that, I don't know how that would impact how we would craft an ordinance or move forward with some of these processes. But I, that was, that was my interpretation, that there isn't a differentiation between what happens in the right-of-way and outside of the right-of-way with the small cell wireless applications. So I don't know if your, if your interpretation is the same.
My general face about all of it is the like, hmm. But yes.
That could have some impact on...
Right.
How we craft something.
You look like you had some feedback?
Yes. Hello, my name's Rue Welch. I had a, I guess, a follow-up question. So I guess I don't understand the current, the new state law you just mentioned. The, so it allows them to place the cells on city-owned property and then, or is it on building their own tower?
So it could be either.
Either, okay. And then the restriction was that it cannot be denied, or I guess I don't...
Correct.
Okay.
So if they come in and they locate a pole that works for every other regulation, the city does not have the ability to say no on the basis of, "We don't want it there."
Okay. Okay, I see.
I guess I would be concerned about maintenance and upkeep if, let's just say, a storm went through and damaged their equipment and, or the, well, the pole, as far as we're concerned, that they would be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of a damaged pole due to something in there. I'd like to see something like that.
I would suppose that would be part of whatever the agreement was, if you're renting or paying or the fee involved in the contract that would go with that, or not?
Yes, it would be. If there was damage to our poles, it would need to be fixed.
The liability piece of all of that. Yes.
Madam Chair, and also to piggyback on that, that made me think through when these sites are no longer in use, when we abandon them. And I think if we're using a CUP, that we can put some requirements as part of the CUP process to say, "When you're abandoning, you're dismantling your equipment, you're not just gonna leave it all up there."
That's a good point.
So, and if we're using the CUP process, that's an easy condition to work in, but...
Hello, my name's Rue Welch. I had another question. I'm not a, I'm not a radio frequency communication expert, but I do have some experience with electronics and networking. So typically, these poles also require some sort of base station or box at the bottom, right? Most of the cell towers have some other connection. Is that under the requirements of, you know, how to powering and that kinda stuff? Is that a separate, you know, the little box at the bottom of the tower relative to the actual antenna?
So the state definition right now, the small cell wireless is just what's on the pole.
Okay.
And it needs to be contained, and I think it's like a six-foot box.
Is that on the pole or including a box on the ground as well?
It's on the pole.
On the pole, okay. I'm not, is that a technical difference between small cell and your, think of your regular cellphone tower if it does not require, or I...
I don't know if I know the answer to that one.
Yeah, I guess I'm, again, most familiar with, you know, your typical 4G other where there's a giant tower with, you know, you typically see a significant amount of electronic equipment at the bottom for antenna and power, I imagine. I guess, again, it will follow on with more, more details when we actually probably get an application, I guess.
Madam Chair, I could just...
Yes, all right, thank you.
...a comment to respond to that, just to give you a sense of macro site, it's, you have small cell wireless and then you have the macro sites. Macro sites are governed by different, different definition, and so they're subject to different conditions. Some of that being, when you have these water tower sites, what you'll see in a lot of, a lot of cities, some sort of base, a hut, some sort of protection, protective place where you've got the electrical and the fiber, whatever connectivity that they have to get the power and the signals up to those macro sites. As our city planner mentioned, the definition is very different for small cells, but, and everything does have to be contained on the pole itself, and that's where some of the aesthetic concerns come in, because these poles can be any, any size in terms of, and not necessarily have any rhyme or reason there could. You could have four different carriers or five different carriers with different designs, and that's part of the concern. If we are limited in our local control to set some standards as it relates to, you know, they have to, you know, all be a certain height or whatever it might be. So that's, so there's a, there's a difference with those macro sites and what you see on those big, tall monopoles or on top of water towers and stuff like that, then... or on top of water towers and stuff like that than these small cells. So very specific statute, very specific definitions, um, and subject to a lot of scrutiny at the federal and state level right now because of the, the major rollout that's coming.
Thank you.
Hopefully that helps.
Visually speaking, neither of these photos are representing a macro site, right? Correct. I think that, I mean, that's a separate satellite space, basically, that's powering these.
If you think of a big water tower and if you can visualize a water tower with all the different antennas on top, that, that is a really good example of what a macro site would be.
Like, uh, I think there's one behind the current fire station, Public Works Building, right? Where there's, as I recall?
That would be a macro site.
Macro cell where it's a, it's a tower with a small electronics cabinet.
I mean, from a public aspect, I was just trying to differentiate that. Because when this is what you're looking at, it's a little bit left to the imagination. Thank you.
Um, just a couple other comments. Like the photos that you're seeing on here, a lot of the small cells, um, in cities where they are starting to go in or if it's on city-owned or publicly-owned property, you're seeing them go in on light posts, on streetlight, um, those type of things. But they're also popping up in parking lots. Um, in the middle of a parking lot, you'll have a pole. So not a giant pole, but a pole, maybe, maybe a little bit smaller than, um, a streetlight and will have the some, the small cell technology, um, equipment on there. But the rollouts and the things that, that are coming and why we're looking at these ordinances, I suspect, is because the carriers are getting ready to really roll this out on a more massive scale. Um, and because of it, how it communicates, the mesh network, you have to, there has to be density. They have to be close together so they can talk to one another.
It seems like the timing is right for the topic, so. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other thoughts? Anybody?
It's a heavy lift, so thank you for taking us on.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, well, move on to number five, communications. Any other updates? Glenn, do you have anything for us?
I got nothing for you, other than I'm really looking forward to being your.
Our liaison, yeah.
The only commission I haven't been liaison to.
So you're gonna spoil us?
Yes.
Okay.
It's new and exciting and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing.
Great. We look forward to it too.
Courtney used to always bring goodies.
There is a precedent. Erin?
Um, so beginning in March, there will be a couple new commission members with the vacancies left by Joy and Lori, both advancing to the council. So March will, um, do, we'll set a new chair, a vice chair, move through that process. I'm also starting to work on like a planning commission one-on-one so we can go back to some of the basics so we can all be on the same page about roles, responsibilities. There's a couple development projects that we're hearing about and reviewing right now. So Hawthorne Ridge Final Plat is in for staff review. Meridian Fields Phase Two is likely to come in for Final Plat this spring. Meadows at Spring Creek has been talking about their Phase Two Final Plat. So we're seeing some of those, um, phases where they phased it in either one or two developments come in a lot sooner than we typically thought they would, which is exciting, meaning they're hoping to have more of an inventory. So I think we're gonna have a busy spring and summer again. Maybe we'll match last summer.
It's a competition.
Yeah.
Now, the city got a big grant from Deed?
Yes. So for, that was for Commerce Drive, so it's through Deed. Commerce is the north-south road that will support Lakeview and then some additional development north of Fleet Farm. So the city received a grant for nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
That's so awesome. Fabulous. Great. Well, the March plan sounds good. And we'll look forward to the new members as well.
Also note, we have a new building inspector starting early in March. So right now, we just have our building official that's doing all plan, review, and inspections. He has some part-time help. But we are moving forward with hiring a full-time person. So to support the building department, the planning department, doing some of that plan, review, and inspection. So we're excited. March fourth, we're welcoming the new building inspector onto our team.
Great.
March meeting date?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-first, okay. I won't be here.
Okay.
Spring break. Jennifer, are you gonna be here?
Unfortunately, yes. Not here per se, but not traveling. Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Thank you. Motion carried.
Actually, according to Robert's Rules of.